I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Community forum, this is a time to talk about stuff that is not on the agenda. Is there anybody here for anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, moving on. Conflict of interest declarations. Are there any for today's meeting? Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Kevin, second by Ashley. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same side. Motion carried. Communication and discussion items. Administrative reports. Business manager. Elementary principal.
Last week our students participated in the James Valley Academy. We had, everybody did well. They all made it into the oral runs. So they did well. We had Simon Schnitzer, Sawyer Morseth, Cora Plispin, Kayden Kramer, Emma Langbein, Assyria Woodbrook, Ciara Stevens, Jona Weber, Sophie Meiling, Gracie Finn, Kimber Heath, and Ariana Langbein. We had a nice turnout on Thursday last week when we had our spring concert with the grade six to twelve. Mr. Bliss did a great job with both our band and our choir sounded great. We will be wrapping up here with our field trips this next couple of weeks. Altogether the classes either are going or have gotten to go to the Capitol Pier, the museum at Pier, bowling, to the park, to the movie. And then some of them went to the children's museum, Brookings. And these are a huge deal for the, not only the kids but the staff because you have to find a lot of people. And it's a lot of stress taking thirty kids to the museum or even to the park and trying to find everybody before they come home. So we have three elementary music concerts left. We decided that we would split them this spring because we had such a huge turnout that first one, we ran out of seating room. So pre-K through one, that's May twelfth, this is Thursday at six thirty. And then second through third is May sixteenth at six thirty. And fourth and fifth is May seventeenth at six thirty. And then our final day, the last day of school, at twelve thirty we'll have elementary and middle school boards that day. And that's also when we hand out their graduation diplomas from each grade. My daughter, so parents can come for that. Parents can come for that. It's a twelve thirty if they want to. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. There will be baskets. Usually we have baskets set up in the conference room by the office for the creators. So if people want to drop off gifts or little things, they can do that with their graduation.
Okay, thank you. Secondary principal.
Thank you to Mrs. Julie Clark and Mrs. Lacy Zurfus as well as the junior class and parents for a great prom and post-prom. The decorations were beautiful and we appreciate all of your hard work. And then they got to use those Sunday through the butterfly ball. So that was great to have that back as well. Thank you to the FFA officers, Mr. Boersma and Mrs. Holfer for hosting the FFA banquet to honor all of our FFA members. Congratulations to the floor culture team who earned first place at state, which is a huge accomplishment. The following students earned a trip to the national convention in Indianapolis this fall. Hayley Clark, who won first place in the state individually, Gianna Richmond, second place, Faith Nelson, thirteenth, and Maya Gomes-Mont. So if you've ever been to FFA convention, I used to go quite a few years as a chaperone. You know, they put the top teams on stage and then they counted down to the one. And winning state is just, it's phenomenal because there are so many students competing. So we're really proud of that group. Thank you to all of the staff that worked hard to prepare the school for the open house. We had a good turnout and the Hosa group, freshman class, and drama departments did well on fundraising efforts. Congratulations to the seven through nine track teams for both winning the two-eight-one conference junior high championship. And then our varsity teams both won today. So that is, out of all my years I've been here, I think that is the first that we've won our four in one year. So congratulations to all of the track coaches for that. Thank you to Mr. Bliss and the sixth through twelfth grade students that were in the concert last week. The music was great and we have a lot of talented musicians in our school. Congratulations to the thirty-two-hundred-meter relay girls team that placed fourth place at Howard Wood Relays. Team members include Laney UTEP, Kendall UTEP, Kate and Chemnitz, and Kelsey Roberts. They also broke the school record that day for that event. For upcoming events, this Thursday the drama class will perform their play at five P.M. On the seventeenth at two P.M. we will recognize all of our seniors, announce scholarships, and have spring awards. The public is invited to attend and our plan is to have things set up for graduation and hold that in the main gym. On May nineteenth, the track team will travel to the region track meet to compete. And on the twenty-first, we will celebrate graduation at three P.M. Track awards will be handed out on May twenty-third at three P.M. with a short program that the public is invited to attend. We will have high school semester tests and final projects due on May twenty-third and May twenty-fourth. There will be a summer school session held in June as an option for high school students that need to recover credits for classes that they may need to retake. And this will be paid through our Esra funds. And that's it.
Thank you. Mid-central report. We had a meeting yesterday, but there wasn't nothing. I think our next meeting is two months from now. Four?
We were on the...
Sorry, Ted keeps calling and I'm not sure if he's trying to call in. Sorry. Can I just call him? It would have been different if he just called once, but... Hi. Do you want me to put your speaker? Okay. Hold on. Okay. Um, there was really nothing on that either. Nothing to report, so you can listen. All right. Approve the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Jamie. Do I have a second? Second by Burke. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item eight, there was nothing. Item nine, action items, new and unfinished business, open enrollments.
So for open enrollments, we have three listed, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. After talking with Mrs. Hyder and we looked at class numbers, we would recommend deny twelve. That's WW twenty-three dash twelve because that student would be entering sixth grade and that's our largest class already. But the other two would be going into classes, kindergarten, and fifth grade, and we have room in those classes. So that would be my recommendation to deny twelve and accept thirteen and fourteen.
Do I have a motion to approve thirteen and fourteen and deny twelve?
So moved.
Motion by Kevin. Second. Second by Jamie. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same side. Motion carried. Contracts for board approval?
So I have two contracts for the board to consider. The first one is for Lexi Hooks for high school science. That would be for forty-one thousand, three hundred dollars. And the second one is for Michael Isted for seventh and eighth grade girls' basketball for one thousand, six hundred, ninety-three dollars and thirty cents.
I got a question. Mrs. Hooks' contract is probably just a standard first-tier teacher contract. Would the language be like that, I wonder? And as far as going forward with earning the college credits, passing the praxis, is that an attachment to that contract or is that taken care of?
So that's through the Department of Education. And those teachers, once they're offered a contract, they have three years to fulfill the requirements.
Is there an addendum or attachment to the contract in regard to that? I think it'd be in our best interest to have that made so she understands going forward and we know she does. And it's maybe not necessary.
Guess you won't be tenured either.
I was gonna say that.
I understand that.
For that reason.
Okay, fine. I was just curious if it was identical to the other contract or if there were extra verbiage or something attached. In the past, we probably have never done that.
Not that I know of.
May I ask?
Absolutely.
So I know we've hired other teachers that are in the midst of obtaining the necessary things. But don't we usually reduce their salary a bit to coincide with them not being completely certified? And then once they obtain that, then they get brought back up to kind of a starting teacher position because then they are a certified teacher? Have we done that before in the past? I thought I was...
We have, but that was when, um, when it was beyond the state requirement. So they maybe had not passed everything they needed and they could not have that certificate. So in this case, the applicant does have a teaching certificate. It's called a preliminary certificate first. Then if offered a contract by the school, then they get a certificate that is good for three years. And then if upon those three years, they don't complete those requirements, there is no permanent certificate.
So in the past, they didn't have that first initial certificate, what you're saying?
They weren't able to get that permanent certificate.
Okay.
So they had the, had one and then they did not, in that timely fashion, I guess, get that permanent. So then they had to be reduced.
Had to be reduced?
They were, they did go down to maybe paraplegic.
Okay, that's what I, okay, recall, okay.
And then they got it and went back up to a teacher.
So it is normal, we have other teachers hired in the same situation that they got started at, like more of a teacher pay, not a, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna.
Good question. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion. We approve those contracts unless it's already been...
Okay, second. Motion by Kevin, second by Ashley. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Nine point three resignations?
I have two resignations for the board. The first is for Mr. Newheart, our high school math teacher. And the second is from Mr. Hooks, our P.E. teacher, head football coach, and head boys' basketball coach. Dear Woolsey Westington staff, administrators, and school board, I am writing to inform you that I will be resigning as the high school mathematics teacher at the conclusion of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. Over the last eleven years here at Woolsey Westington, I have been able to grow as an educator and I want to thank everyone at the school for allowing me the opportunity to become the teacher I am today. I am proud of the work I have done here over the last decade and the work that I know will continue to be done at Woolsey Westington in the decades to follow. It has been a very difficult decision to leave the Warburg community, but I have accepted a new, exciting opportunity in another district. My family and I wish everyone at the school and the community a deep heartfelt thanks for their support, kindness, and understanding. We look forward to hearing about the great things that will continue to happen at Woolsey Westington and will be grateful to know that we were able to play a small part. Sincerely, Jason Newheart. And the second one says, dear Ms. Tim, I hereby resign from my twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three contract upon acceptance by the school board. Sincerely, Boarding Hooks.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept those resignations and thank them for their service with Woolsey Westington? Burke, do I have a second? Second. Second by Ashley. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Nine point four, Hosa National Trip Vehicle Usage Goal.
Hosa is our group that deals with health occupations and Julie's here, so I might have her speak to that. But they have people that qualify for nationals as well, so I don't know if you have something to say.
I have a letter that was written by the student, so I'll just read that here. I'm Kathy Stevens and I'm her co-advisors. It says, dear school board, thank you for your willingness to hear our Hosa chapter's request. In short, Hosa is a club for high school students across the U.S. that supports career development in health professions and improvement of health services. Hosa's goal is to provide opportunities for development in skills, knowledge, and leadership as a means to improve the delivery of quality healthcare. It is a chance for students to learn about a certain health career and participate in a competitive event at the state conference. Woolsey founded our Hosa chapter approximately ten years ago. This year, we took twenty-one students to the South Dakota State Hosa Conference in Sioux Falls. Despite coming from a small school and an even smaller chapter, we had ten students placed in the top ten for different events. What's even more impressive is that five students from our chapter placed in the top three spots for their events. Therefore, qualifying for nationals. Four of these students have committed to compete at the National Hosa Conference in Nashville, Tennessee this coming June. Us that are here tonight, which would have been Casey, Faith, Maddie, and Gianna, are looking forward to the opportunity to showcase their skills at the national level. We have taken away so much from being a part of Hosa and we are more than excited to experience Hosa at a national level. We, as a chapter, ask for your assistance with our travel expenses. It is not a cheap trip and we would appreciate any assistance. We ask you, the school board, to consider allowing us to use the school's suburban as a means of our transportation. We also ask that you consider donating one thousand dollars to our chapter to assist with travel expenses, such as the gas or some hotels, maybe. The fulfillment of these two requests would be of a significant help and greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, the Woolsey Westington Hosa Chapter, which, like I said, is Casey, Faith, Maddie, and Gianna. Thank you.
I make the motion to allow me to use a vehicle and give him a thousand dollars.
Motion by Kevin, second by Ashley to provide the vehicle and a thousand dollars to Hosa. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Nine point five Narcan.
Oh, that's me again. That's getting stuck with me again. Okay, a trend exists in the U.S. about adolescents using prescription opioid agents. There are many different opioids, but examples of some common ones are oxycodone, hydrocodone, fentanyl, and morphine. Opioids attach to brain receptors that affect breathing. The person's breathing slows and he or she eventually stops breathing. Oxygen starvation stops other vital organs like the heart than the brain. Within three to five minutes without oxygen, brain damage starts to occur, soon followed by death. Naloxone or Narcan is a first-line treatment for opioid overdose. Narcan is available in an easy-to-administer nasal spray. It should be administered immediately. Parents and school administrators should not be concerned about adverse health effects of naloxone because if the person has not overdosed on an opioid, there is no effect on the body. The initial cost of Narcan is zero dollars because of a national program that supplies two, two-packs to schools. That expiration for these particular doses is November two thousand twenty-four. When they expire or are used, the school would need to purchase to replace unless there is another program available. The out-of-pocket cost to restock would be about a hundred dollars for a two-pack. I would recommend training of all staff on administration of Narcan, which I'm qualified to do that certification for that. South Dakota state law states the school may acquire Narcan and make it available to personnel who are trained. No school district administrator, school board member, school nurse, or designated school personnel may be held liable for any damage that results from the administration of Narcan. So the steps to making it available here at school would be develop a policy for it. The order, and then we need an ordering provider to complete the form for the free Narcan, which has already been done. Ordering provider to supply a standing order to use it, and then training of our staff, which I would do. So in this file, I just have a proposed policy. The order to get the free Narcan, the order to administer the Narcan, the training that I would do with the staff, the summary of state laws regarding using that in schools, and some information from the National Association of School Nurses. So that's my proposal and whoever's on the policy committee can have this filed. And if you have any questions, please leave it.
Thank you.
I don't think you necessarily need a motion. I hope the policy committee needs to look at that policy.
If you develop a policy and you get that tone of motion approved, the policy change would be going pretty easily by August, I'm sure.
That would be great, yeah. Was my goal is to have it in place by August.
All right, nine point six, summer school rates for paraprofessionals?
So last month we talked about the summer school rates for certified staff, but we didn't talk about paraprofessionals. So my recommendation for that would be, we have a great set of paraprofessionals that are familiar with our students and we're using Esra funds for that, so I would recommend paying them eighteen dollars an hour for their time working through that program. Your program will be... Well, there's three weeks of the first part of the program where it's, you know, kind of like the fun summer school part. And then the second part is another three weeks in July where they do the interventions for those students. Those are the main times. I assume there'll be some special education parar work within the times that they're off. And for high school, that's in, we're going to run that the month of June. So six weeks altogether and we're like just...
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the rate of eighteen dollars an hour for the paraprofessionals for the summer school rate? Motion by Ashley. Second.
I would rather have her stay in this group.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Kevin abstaining. Nine point seven, S D H S A A ballot and amendments?
So for the ballot, there was one seat on the board where Jeff Danielson from Watertown ran unopposed. And then for the amendments, the Equity Association is going through their bylaws and changing some verbiage to better match what they need to do. So my recommendation, all of those would be vote yes.
I'd make the motion to accept. Miss Jennifer, rooms, laws, advice, and all the amendments.
Second.
Motion by Kevin, second by Ted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Nine point eight, review, safe return claim?
So we are required by the Department of Education to review that every six months. So that when Amy and I and Carrie have to do a checklist of items before June tenth, when I sign off on that, that just certifies that we did, we reviewed that earlier this year and then this would be the six months, so. Are there any changes? I mean, it kind of seems, maybe you want to say, a thing, but... I won't say it, no. We need to have that still, you know, there. And I think that you'll continue to see that where you're going to continue to need to look at it for a period of six months, especially when it comes to social rounds and things like that, so.
I think we need any changes. Nothing has changed since last night that we did that, right? Today, but I missed, CDC still has the same regulations that we adjusted for. All right, nine point nine, school success facility.
I'm forward to do a proposal from Mary Lou McGurk. So she came two months ago now and presented the work that she did for her hour comprehensive needs assessment and her work with the schools. And so part of that is going through all of that data and then the following year applying all of that to improve on all the areas that you want to improve upon. And so she has a consulting firm, as we know. We hired her for that process. And she sent me a proposal to look at if the school board would want to consider hiring her for that year for follow-up. And that would include, her proposal is to propose the monitor, she would do the monitor, meets monthly for ten months with the teams, either after school or on Fridays, to accomplish the items of Carrie through where you plan what you're going to do, act to implement the plan, observe what's going on, and then reflect on what needs to be changed. She would submit a report to the board twice a year. And for those services, she would be compensated five hundred dollars per school, per meeting, and that would be fifteen hundred per month, so it would be fifteen thousand dollars. And Amy, that could come out of Esra's funds? You know, something she had discussed while she was here was it's so great to go through the process and you see a lot of things. But if you just put that plan in a file cabinet and don't do anything with it, then why don't you go through the full process? And so it just kind of makes the teams accountable to staff and staff accountable to the teams to make sure that they're following through, so.
Is this something you would recommend to people then?
I would, just because then she's the person, especially since you have a new high school, preschool coming in. You know, that she would be the facilitator of that. What are your thoughts? I definitely think we should hire her because it's her job to make sure we're following all the rules and she holds us accountable. And like Jennifer said, we're gonna have a brand-new high school principal. Probably doesn't mean not gonna go up to plan, it's not, so we need to help. She would help put that person on board and make sure things are done. As planned, all the work that's went into it for the last year, that would be important, I think, to continue on.
And that two thousand is for both elementary and high school?
It's elementary, middle school, and high school.
Do we, I know when they met this year, we had to pay the teachers also, right? Did we give them an extra to stay or no? Am I thinking that wrong?
These, I feel you could, these are not, as in this was, this process was hours upon hours that we met at night. She could do these monthly meetings incorporating into the teacher Fridays.
Okay.
That's an extra four socks. That's up to you as well, but that would be my recommendation, I guess. That would probably be also up to the new superintendent as well when that was done. I, I will be the new superintendent. I, I would agree with you superintendent. I would agree with that. The only problem being is I think that we paid the teachers to be part of it before. And even if we do it on Friday during the school day, that means we're, we'd be taking away time that they would need to work in with students. Or they would be doing stuff, getting ready for their students. We'd be taking that time away from them, whether they, we did it in the morning on Friday or did it after. Either way, they're going to put more hours in. So I would think that, my opinion would be the teachers are going to want to be paid for it, reversed for it, because they're going to put in more hours doing it.
Did you have three separate teams?
Yes.
How many people are on each team? They fluctuate?
About three or four.
Three.
How much of the meetings do you think, did you say how long they would last? Like an hour each time that they need or? How much are we talking about?
She didn't specify. I just know that the meeting with her, I would not think it'd be over an hour. Because, I mean, all the work that went in, those were sessions where we sat there for fifteen, four to eight hours depending on what was happening. But all the work's already been done and as long as we're following the plan, it really shouldn't take very long. It would be, you know, we're missing part of the plan, the plans we change and maybe that meeting would be longer, but I wouldn't expect it to be real long.
Do you, did you have a, ten of you?
Yeah, I would have taken all, took the high school, I would have taken all.
Any other questions?
In my opinion, if it's done during school hours, I don't think we can pay the teachers on, in this different, or on these boards that are working the same, you know, you've got teachers over here teaching, you've got teachers that leave to go to these boards that are getting their teacher pay. I don't think you can add additional pay if the meetings are going to be after school. I don't have a problem with that, but if it's Friday during normal business hours, I don't know if you can pay the teachers that participate on this additional funds.
Can we find out from Mary Lou or how long she intends, thinks that they are? I mean, if they're, is there going to be less than an hour and it's only, you know, a few steps away then, then great. But if not, maybe we do need to look at additional options, I mean.
I don't, my, I just don't want to speak for the teachers and say they think she's great with that because the teachers who have done it, again, have put in hours and hours of work on it. And I, I would definitely think that, you know, they signed up for the committees knowing that they would spend hours doing that. And they knew they would be reimbursed, so I wouldn't want to say that they'd be all in for not being reimbursed. And we could definitely schedule for after-school hours. I mean, that's not a problem for them.
If we can schedule them to go during the school hours, then that doesn't take away from their family time and it gets them in while they're there. I know it takes away from their, their classroom, but if it's less than an hour, it's a half an hour, I have a hard time too, like reversing or, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to be cheap, but I have a hard time them stepping away for a half an hour to do it. If it's going to take them longer than that, then again, I think we should reassess. But maybe we could ask her and find out for sure how long they're going to be before we try to hypothesize on what we should or shouldn't do. Get some concrete information on that.
Can we table this till June?
Well, I think, I think for her, you probably would want to, just because she works with a number of schools.
And then the teacher pay issue would be just a separate item during another meeting.
Because I can find that out if you want it on the June agenda, but you can put it on the June agenda.
And I think that the teacher pay came out of ESAR funds as well, correct?
Do we have an ESAR balance? We're making up a food for thought for the next meeting we have earlier scheduled. Amy, let's have a little report on that.
I mean, I don't have it all budgeted.
No, I actually.
Or, so like this would be added into it, meaning that all the funds have a principal.
Right. Maybe you just give us an update on that at the June meeting.
And maybe talk about that timeline too of when each one, each one, one, two, and three have to be spent.
Refresh us on that program and the dollar consensus of all. I appreciate that.
Okay, any other discussion on Mary Lou McGurk?
I'd make a motion to approve the proposal to hire the school's success facilitator as present.
Motion by Ted, do I have a second? I'll second. Motion by Ashley, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Elementary music position.
So we are in need of a part-time music teacher. Just to get feelers out there, I've had the position listed on our state teacher placement website for a long time. I got one inquiry and have since contacted that person and they are not interested in applying. And I just think music is a crucial part of an academic program. So when Brian from Exotech is here, our tech company, he told me about another high school that found a teacher in Minnesota that teaches via Zoom. And it worked out really well. The teacher lives in Minnesota, teaches via Zoom, but then comes for Veterans Day program, winter concert, spring concert. If I say anything wrong, correct me on this. Mrs. Hyden did a lot of light work on this. It would be to come the week of the program to rehearse in person with the students, but otherwise everything else would be via Zoom. And this would be for K five music because we do have a six through twelve music person. And so his dollar amount to do that would be twenty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. Mileage, six hundred miles round trip, forty-two cents a mile would be two hundred fifty-two dollars. He also works into his contract accommodations, which would be approximately one hundred twenty dollars a day per diem. He also receives from school districts he works with, one hundred twenty dollars per day. So the total that the school would be looking at to have this person would be thirty-two thousand, three hundred thirty-six dollars.
Can you say that name?
Thirty-two thousand, three hundred thirty-six dollars. My assumption would be, you know, I haven't spoken with that other school, but that they do a contract, just very similar to a teaching contract, so it spells out exactly what is required of that person to do that.
Have we put feelers out to all of colleges and all of their websites that have like alumni boards and job boards? Have we reached out to the Department of Labor? I also looked on the website to find like some other teaching websites, other than our state website, to where we can post. And there's like some, gave some top ten boards that go nationwide that you can post on for free. Have we, have we tried this?
Through North.
Through North, no. Okay. Northern's the only one that we, I don't know where we have teaching at, I guess, in our colleges, but.
All of the colleges. Northern is kind of known as the teaching college, so that goes thanks to Terry with Mackenzie, Mackenzie going there, got me in touch with that person. And so it's posted on their board, which goes to all of their alumni and current students too, so. When I talked to the superintendent of the school, Roscoe, is where this guy was teaching. There were two in all of the schools this year, there were two music majors who graduated for education, two. Roscoe got one of them because they've been looking for years for one. And the other one, and, and what happens with these music teachers, because there's two, they graduated and there's probably, I don't know, there's five hundred openings in the state right now for teachers. So what happens is they can pretty much stay at price. They either, you meet it or they have less and less. So it's very, very difficult to find a music teacher. This guy is.
Any teachers.
Any teachers, very difficult. I mean, this guy is willing to have a meeting in Zoom with the board if they want to do something with them. I mean, he's very nice, he's very, Mr. Aaron Jackson, he's very professional. I heard nothing but good things from the superintendent. He said he, he wouldn't, he did K twelve there, but the middle school and high school wasn't the best idea because it was tough to keep them in line with that. But the elementary was wonderful, he said, so.
Does he have a par at children's school? And we have enough parents on staff to handle that.
Well, that's what I was going to question, like, how much, have we factored in how much it's going to cost for like someone to supervise these children?
So I have him, if he would come, I have that down to two hours per day.
Okay. If he would come here?
No, we have him Zoom in, so we got a par under, for two hours.
Also, the internet issue, I understand, yes, we have Santel, fiber optic and everything, but for Zoom, all three of my kids have said, we've lost connection, even during basketball games. We have connection issues. That's also going to be an issue if you're going to be relying on Zoom four days a week, every single week of the school year. You're going to have to make sure your internet connection is good, otherwise it's a hundred and twenty dollars a day down the drain.
I'm not against meeting with him and keeping our options, but what are our options? I mean, I'd really like to see his amp up for recruiting efforts and, and do some more. I mean, I feel like it's a disservice to our kids to not have it at all. But I don't know, but I feel that it's the best option either for these little minds that are excited to meet with somebody and then we're going to get them on TV and I don't know about the rest of the parents, but I'm not trying to get mine away from that, so. I don't know. What are our other options if we don't find somebody? I know that we maybe discussed, like, the teach homeroom teachers doing their own music, which I know isn't ideal, but can you give us our options? What would we look at if we don't find somebody?
I would say the options would probably be having your homeroom teachers do it, build that into the schedule, or not having music. You can, you know, the state has put limits on long-term subs, so you can have a long-term sub, but only for a set amount of time. You can't just have someone come in and sub for the school year, so. The goal is you could put, well, that would be if you could find subs to come in as well to do that. I think it would be really beneficial to, you know, similar to, we went through an interview tonight, do the similar type of thing on Zoom with him, to get a feel for him, get a feel for how it works, just to get more information.
I'm not against that, like, so I just want to make sure that we know what all of our options are and before jumping.
I know right now there are a number of area schools within forty miles looking for music as well. With, and we've been contacting each other. Who do you have, who do you have? No one, no one. We've talked about sharing. We've talked about sharing. We've talked, I, yeah, I've talked to areas of schools, say, if you get one, can we share? Yeah, if I can get one, if you get one, that's the same. It's just the teacher shortage in the United States and in South Dakota was immense.
I have a question. Is it listed as only part-time then, or? Would there be other duties?
I, well, I had it listed both ways, probably since January.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just if someone's doing a search, you know, if it's part-time, they'd be like, nope.
So if they go to the ASBSD teacher placement, which is where, if teachers sign up for that, Mrs. Hyder's probably on that, I'm on that. So if you are qualified and positioned, every time a job opens, it doesn't matter if it's part-time, full-time, what it is, you get an email automatically that sends you to a link for that job. The sad part is the number of emails coming through are just crazy. So I guess that, that would be my suggestion, to set up something with him to meet him. Go from there as well and keep working with mine, obviously, the person is the best way to go, absolutely.
Would he be able to show us like what it would look like to the students?
I would think you could ask him that because we could let him know of that ahead of time.
I understand music is a huge part. I mean, I grew up going to choir. We had an amazing choir and band director when I was going through school. But the arts isn't just music, it's also visual arts. And having an art teacher, is there some other, what I understand, does six through twelve, from what I understand, he doesn't have much experience with instruments. Would he be able to do K through twelve choir? Unfortunately, we may have to drop band. But at least you would have sound for art, for arts, you'd have choir, but then hire another, hire an art teacher to do your visual arts instead of band. You're going to have to open up and use your imagination a little bit when it comes to fine arts, unfortunately. It's also an option.
Okay, do you want to schedule that for us? And then we can see if it will work, if that works. Okay. Nine point one one is landscaping.
So if you noticed in front of the gym, it includes a hallway in front of the gym, as Shane and I were walking around the grounds, I said, I would really like to before graduation do something here because the amount of dirt from the hotel will seep north. Seems to have gone in there. He and I were looking at that digging round in there. You know, and we discussed getting some rock, some of that is really sinking, would make a big difference on that. My hope in our plan is that Shane and Ralph are going to go get the Westington School Bell until they perform graduation as well. We're going to have both the bells in front of the school. So that would be done before that, but I wanted to propose, I really would like to purchase some landscape rock.
Is that something our staff can place if we have it delivered? Do we need to have it delivered and placed?
I, that's what I was just asking, if I, Shane and I haven't even checked into it because I wasn't sure what your thoughts on it were.
It has filled in. If we're going to do something, I think we should probably make sure we've got the dirt sloped away from the building, right? The first four to six feet of the building, so water doesn't fall in. Would clean up things quite a bit. Do you want to do this in the next week?
I just wanted your thoughts on what, I didn't know if any of you have noticed, if it's really becoming.
Right, looks like.
A sand, a sand thing is what it's becoming. So maybe even as a summer, for them, a summer list to do.
Can't imagine the expense will be huge for the rock. It's one or two side dumps, I would guess, material delivered from whoever needs it.
Do you want to check on prices? Do you want it done before graduation? Is that ideally what you're asking?
Well, the way Ted is saying it, that's the way to do it correctly, which would be more time than that. But if he posts a summer and then Shane and I talked about, okay, what's the summer schedule going to look like, what are the projects that you need to put out there? That's just one, as we walked around, I said. That's just one, as we walked around, I said, this, I mean, it really needs to, that's the front of the school, you want that to look nice. And it's just really deteriorating. So, to do it correctly, I think it would be a summer project, but even to get the going end to get some pull, move ahead with it, so it gets on the list or whatever it needs to do. Do you need motion for that too?
No, not to plan a project, no.
We'll just agree after, we'll come back to that in due.
Okay.
On nine point twelve, campus school board election results.
Okay, I have you, Ted, and Josh down here, and Kevin, if anyone wants outside, yes. But then, whatever. Yep. So, I think you three, if they can get one. On the back. And then what we gotta do is just, I have two, one for the two-year, and one for the three-year. And so, we will jot down what the votes were, actually, the totals, and... So, this is for the Westington precinct. And then, Mason had seventeen. Yeah. Yeah. And Joe had forty-seven. And then on the three boards, Tara had thirty-nine.
Miss Texas two?
Yeah. Joe had fourteen, and Ashley had four. Jamie had the forty-three. Travis had the higher. And if they all want to, that's two, those two three. And then for the Wilson one. Yeah, and then the total. So, the two-year term, Mason had eighty-two, and Joe White had a sixty-nine vote. Eighty, or eighty, I think I said. You'll never survive on walking. So, and Wilson had a hundred and ninety-seven out of six-hundred sixty-four voters, so that was a twenty-nine percent turnout. Westington had sixty-three out of a hundred and seventy-three, quarter of thirty-six percent turnout. And so, the total was two-hundred sixty voters out of eight-hundred thirty-seven, for a thirty-one percent voter turnout. And then, so Tara had a hundred and sixty-seven. Joe had eighty-five, Ashley had a hundred and seventy-five, Jamie had a hundred and ninety-five, Travis had thirty-seven, and Kathy had forty-five for totals. And then basically, I just need the three of you guys, if you can look at these and sign it, and the canvas. And then, then the multiple percentage. So, then we just need a motion.
Okay, so next is Ted.
Next on page two, Ted, we'll have to start all over, we're gonna do it in August. Have another election. I would motionally approve the canvas of the school board election result.
Second. Ted, second by Kevin. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Nine point thirteen, Premier Equipment rental proposal.
So, I have a rental contract from TJ Stevens at Premier Equipment. And this is the dealership that we've gone through the last couple of years for the tractor rental. And he's gotta do that, we always do it this time of year to be able to have it. And so, the price is the same that we paid for the last couple of years, it's for two thousand dollars, and it's from the first of October to the twenty-sixth of May.
Two thousand dollars. It's a government deal.
Yep, it's, it's still, yeah.
I mean, that's, it was fifteen...
To do a government program, that's why we have to do it so far in advance, he has to order that. Don't go into Premier and try to get one.
It was fifteen hundred dollars for a long time.
Motion by Jamie, second by Kevin.
No, Jamie, you can't borrow the truck.
Do you sign the Premier Equipment rental proposal? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Nine point fourteen, carpet high school hallway.
So, we are planning on carpeting, there was one room that does need it, we've been kind of on a rotation of carpeting about two rooms every year, just to keep that. So, we're not carpeting ten rooms at once. So, there is, the middle school English room needs carpet, but Amy has asked me a couple of months, so I put it on the agenda that we should probably start doing something with those hallways. I know I talked about that with David, and Shane and I have talked about it. You know, that high school hallway is the oldest one. I'm not sure, the moisture content can't be wide, but we are starting to get a lot of cracks down that high school hallway and enough that the tile is starting to chip, like within the last two months. We're really seeing it. So, just to do a little preliminary light work, Shane went to Dwayne's Carpet Outlet and the Carpet Center, spoke with them, what are you putting in schools? And surprisingly, the hallways there are going to carpet tiles, similar to what we have here, just with walkout carpet, the first hall room, many feet. So, I want to put that on the agenda because I think it would be good to do something with that high school hallway. That's one of the things we got ready up for because it was starting to happen, and so that was on our fire code, starting to, that's considered a safety thing. So, either all those sections of tiles are going to be replaced, they have years and years of wax on there. So, stripping it down, placing tiles, waxing, would probably take a majority of the summer.
So, do they just tear up all the tile and put the carpet down?
They think they can, they think with where the doorways are, that they can put it on top. But we haven't gotten any further than Debbie Bush happened to be coming through town today, she came, we got measurements, and the Carpet Center's gonna do the same.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to maybe throw that into motion, but a bigger problem, the buildings are coming, the committee identified that, I'll bet we haven't got anything about it, but to talk about it in the fall. Part of that problem, if the floor and tiles crack, might lead, you know what I'm talking about, Jamie, between the two buildings where we're starting to have a disaster. And that's our fault. I mean, really, we, that was gonna, we were gonna go forward, you know, and push that, decide what to do, but we could fix that floor, obviously, but just the caveat going forward, we need to look at that area between those two buildings, because that's caving away. Something that we started and probably pursue from the community standpoint. We probably should look into that part here, maybe every next week or two, we can get together, gather figures on the carpet. We don't wanna put down carpet tiles at the fore, keep evening. If we can prevent that.
And a lot of it really does have to do with that, because if you don't look at that, there is more difference.
I don't know, we can get, we maybe need to have somebody come and look and scratch their head about that between those buildings, because that's getting bad. And that could be huge, that could be hundreds of thousands of dollars. You start tearing that up, I got a feeling the sands you ordered away from under the ceiling out there, so, it would surprise me. But that would go hand in hand, yeah, the carpets agree, if the floors get cracked, tile and chip, we gotta address it.
So, you think you'll have estimates for the next regular school meeting from the Carpet Center?
You know, who knows, maybe we even have by the day you meet with the candidates.
Sure.
Yeah, because to get on their list and get the carpet and get somebody to put it down.
Some are short in what the person...
August first gonna be here to pull it down.
So, that would be my goal, Ted, to have them before those candidate interviews, so, you know, put that on a short agenda, yeah.
They're obviously putting installation on the quote.
Can I make a recommendation, if you're checking into the carpet?
Sure.
If the tile is already cracking, put the carpet on top, the tile's still taking the abrupt. If it starts cracking and coming apart, you've just wasted money on carpet.
What's the lifespan of those carpet tiles too? Can we ask her? Like, I just keep thinking dirt and kids and there are the warranty.
Shouldn't have the warranty for a while.
Well, it's like what we have out here and, you know, with the hallway, sure going up.
I was just thinking like dirt and stuff, like how often are we gonna have to replace it versus doing the tile there again? Is it gonna last longer? What's our, what's our cop's difference between tile and that carpet?
And even kind of, I didn't know what this gentleman was saying, if we put a thirty thousand dollar floor down and we got structural problems in thirty-six months, the floor is gonna be destroyed. Does that hallway kinda lie right up in the same area where we got the other ground? But they for sure give us some prices on that.
Right, yeah.
Maybe we can, before we order, if we did, we can look at the bigger picture outside, you're soon.
Are you talking about right back here? No, like if you're going from the egg shop and you're going to where the pot machines are, it's that corridor.
Let's just shift in it. Yes, I do need to make it, make light of it.
Jake, if you can get those, you'll add that to the...
Yep.
Next item is executive session, South Dakota carpet law, one dash twenty-five dash two, we're going in for personnel. Do I have a motion to go into executive session at eighty-six? Motion by Jamie. If I broke, all those in favor say aye. Same sign, motion carried. Okay, we're coming out of executive session at eighty-six, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Motion by Ashley. Second by Jamie, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.